This conference will now
Say anything? Really quiet.
Patient.
Patient.
Okay, take thirty. Can I say the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution, our nation, under God, indivisible, with every due justice for all. Good morning, everybody. This is the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors meeting. We're at the Mitchell County Courthouse in Osage. Meeting's available by go-to meeting also. We have an agenda in front of us. We have a couple supervisors might need to leave earlier, so I'd like to bump a couple things up in the agenda, change it a little bit. So items ten and eleven regarding the compensation board and the wage increase. I'd like to put that after the county engineer update, so we know we have all supervisors here for those two items. So the agenda would be from six, then we do ten and eleven, then we continue with home health after that. So is there okay with supervisors? Otherwise, I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda as amended. I'll move to make that motion. Frank's made a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Aren't those seconds? Any discussion? All of you ever say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Approved minutes of the December twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Any corrections needed? Otherwise, we can approve it.
Make more for the December twelfth meeting.
Anderson has made a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
May I have a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none?
We'll call Tom.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sidney. Bye. Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Motion carries. County attorney general discussion.
I will be short. I don't have anything specific to talk about as far as the year I'm concerned. Try to keep people updated as I go, you know, things that are going on, people are waiting to hear from me, so they don't necessarily have any updates right now, but I'm always happy to take questions or answer questions or criticisms or whatever else. Anybody have anything?
Any questions for the attorney? We are good.
All right, well.
Thank you much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Approved sheriff report for November.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I have November fees. We already have three thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars and sixteen cents.
Is there a motion to approve the sheriff's report fees of three thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars and sixteen cents?
I make that motion.
That's those made a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
May I have a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none?
We'll call Mark. Mike.
Aye.
Sidney. Bye. Jim.
Aye.
Tom.
Anything else, Sheriff? No, that's all I have. Anything for the sheriff? Very good. All right, thank you. Thank you. Department head discussion. Is there any department head discussion?
Well, I just want to say that Hinkle Construction, Cody from Hinkle Construction come last Thursday seven a.m. me and Dave went up with them and we tore into the walls a little bit up there. David already started, but it's determined it's the ladders coming in around the windows, so you kind of look at, to me, it looks like there's a van seal on one, but have to be on the outside to see more, so we're gonna wait till spring, because we schedule it now, and then it's snow, it's cold, whatever, you can't do anything anyways, so we're gonna schedule it for spring and go up on the outside and figure out what's going on and take care of that leak.
Did it look like there was just one window?
Just one window.
Just one?
Locks and the glass and the ceilings. Look from the outside, it looks like there's a void in it, I mean, but it doesn't look like much of one, but shit, wind driven range, you can get a lot coming in, so. See, we'll have till spring, and they're gonna come back and get a lift, go up there again, and they might have to bring a crane. So figured if we're gonna do something to one window, we might as well do it all, you know, but take a crane to get all the way around there. You go up there, it's pretty high.
All right, very good.
Thanks.
Any other department head discussion? Okay. County engineer update.
Morning.
Morning.
Not much to discuss. I intend to be gone next week if the ice gets thick enough, so I'm here, otherwise I'll write it down. We are under, we are getting our bridge inspections done currently right now. We do have one M D repair we need to do on one structure, so we can avoid having to limit the weight on it and put it in our program for the next two, within the next two years to get it replaced, so.
Which one is that one?
It's one on Fourth Thirtieth, East of Little Cedar, that we call the, what we call the Hanky Bridge or whatever.
Oh, okay.
There's some piling that need a little bit of attention. They've been rusting and need a little bit of extra steel underneath them to kind of get us by and we can replace it, so. But they're not done yet, so we'll see if there's anything else that pops up in the meantime, but we'll program that bridge within the next couple of years to get replaced. So.
Or it's already, is that north or south? It's either.
That's east, that's east and west road from, oh, the Blackout? Yeah.
Red Timber?
Yeah, is it?
I believe it's just West to Timber.
Or, oh, is it Ocean?
Is it?
Or, sorry. Come up from Rose.
Oh, it's that first one, right?
Oh, it's by, by Hankies.
Okay, that first, okay.
The one just east of.
Oh, East, oh, the little one.
Yeah, it's a, yeah. It's got some, it's an old, it's got steel piling with wood back walls.
Okay.
Kind of, it's got steel stringers. I think there's steel stringers, a steel deck with a concrete slab deck on top of it, steel beams in the concrete deck, so this has some piling that needs to be reinforced for a little while, so. And since the weather's gonna be nice, we can probably, once we get, you know, a little bit of spec from the consultant, we can have somebody go out in the woods and steal on it real quick, like, so. Kind of minor, but kind of, so we gotta kind of keep, keep in tune, so. And then we've been working, I've been working with my assistant in Worth County to try to get our C H B P project turned, I think by the end of the week we'll have that submitted for audit anyway, so we can keep moving on, closing out other projects between both counties, so. Other than that, that's all I've got for you this morning.
All right. Any questions for the engineer?
Yeah, when you talk about bridges, you know, some bridges that'll say like Virgil Creek or, why some bridges have a stream name and not all or?
That was something the D N R started doing years ago. They're the ones that started labeling when they put the signs up. We didn't do that. Yeah, so it's just, I think it was prob, I don't, I don't know if it was more of a informative thing or if it was part of, I don't know what their program was, probably try to get more people aware of what, what are creeks and what are drainage ways. I don't know the answer to that.
They don't do it anymore.
We didn't. What's that?
They must not do it anymore.
They put up what they needed to in the county, and as far as I know, that once they got it located, they, they did that, but we never put them up. We didn't put them up, apparently, no, they.
I think it was so that they could have control of that waterway.
Well, it was what it was. The, the back of our minds was it was a, more of a, it's named, now you've got a, if it's a named creek, now you've got more requirements than if it was just a drainage way, so.
But like Little Cedar River, I don't think that's labeled anywhere.
It should be. But not that I'm aware of. Yeah. Those signs could have gone old and then never replaced, but a lot of times they are, the bigger ones are, so.
Yeah, but I don't know. It's, it's a D N R thing. I don't know that we're responsible for those signs or not. Yeah.
Any other questions for the engineer? All right, very good. Thank you. Okay, we'll bounce to consideration of compensation board salary recommendations. So the comp board met. They based their recommendations and we approved this by resolution, so. I don't have the percent sign on that, but. Give me a second here. Okay, so. Get that. So they met and they based percents on the different elected officials' offices. Auditor would be a three point five percent raise, county attorney a three point five percent raise, sheriff a five percent raise, supervisors a one point five percent raise, and supervisor chairperson increased the stipend from a hundred dollars per month to a hundred twenty-five dollars per month. Those are the percents of their decision. So this is, we approved this by resolution. Resolution twelve oh three dash twenty-three. Whereas Mitchell County Compensation Board needs annually to recommend the compensation schedule for the elected officials for the fiscal year immediately followed in accordance with Iowa Code Chapters three thirty-one point nine oh three and three thirty-one point nine oh seven, and whereas the Mitchell County Compensation Board met on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and made the following salary recommendations for the following elected officials for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four. Elected officials, the auditor, current salary seventy-one thousand eight hundred and four point nine zero dollars, proposed increases two thousand five hundred thirteen point one seven dollars, and recommended salary would be seventy-four thousand three hundred and eighteen point zero seven dollars. Recorder would be the same numbers, the treasurer would be those same numbers. The county attorney, current salary ninety thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars point, ninety thousand five hundred and eighty-five point eight three dollars, proposed increase three thousand one hundred and seventy point five one dollars, and recommended salary would be ninety-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-six point three nine dollars. Sheriff, hundred and twelve thousand ninety-six point three three dollars, proposed increase five thousand six hundred and four point eight two dollars, recommended salary hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and one point one five dollars. Supervisors, thirty-eight, current salary thirty-eight thousand three hundred and eleven point eight eight dollars, proposed increase five hundred and seventy-four point six eight dollars, recommended salary thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and eight six point five six dollars. Therefore, we have resolved that Mitchell County Board of Supervisors adopts the salary recommendations for elected officials for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, as recommended by the county, Mitchell County Compensation Board. And what's rest in this resolution is the same numbers is what I read. No difference in any of that that's in there.
Do you want to refresh supervisor chair?
Supervisor, okay, supervisor chair. Approved salary forty thousand three hundred and eighty-six point five six dollars, that's, so that would be an increase of two thousand zero seventy-four point six eight dollars. Okay, that's just based on that stipend, then?
Yes.
I didn't look at that until it was approved, okay?
Yes.
All righty. So approved, this nineteenth day of December, twenty twenty-three, that's if we approve it. So I will accept a motion to approve resolution twelve oh three dash twenty-three.
Is there any discussion on this?
Yeah, we did, we do a motion in a second and discussion. Yep, you bet. Is there a motion to approve? I'll move to make that motion. Anderson has made a, excuse me, Frank has made a motion. Is there a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, you know, this is like a yearly evaluation for a job, and I guess not showing up is not a good thing in my mind, and I'm sure that's why the outcome is what it is, because of nonparticipation, but. And after the fact, I was asked about it, so, I can't speak for other people that didn't come to it, so, so I told them.
So what are you saying? I guess, I'm not sure what you're saying.
Well, all the elected officials were there except for three supervisors.
Okay.
And, you know, so that's why the outcome probably is what it is.
Uh, I guess I'll just comment about that. We, there's five people sitting here, everybody has different schedules, and sometimes a schedule does not allow you to participate in everything that's going on.
Okay.
Now, just in case, so the compensation board, their job is to compare our salaries, all the elected official salaries, as far as what's going on in the state, and then that's how, trying to keep everything somewhat similar. It's not a, it's not a performance based board where we go there and hopefully have been doing a good job so that they, they give us a raise because of that. That's not how it works. The electorate is the ones that decide our performance, so just by showing up at that meeting doesn't count.
Well, it did in some of their eyes, so.
Okay.
You know, like Howard County, they went ten percent across the board, you know, so.
Well.
Just to give you an example.
This isn't Howard County.
I know it's not, but I'm just giving you an example.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm really happy that the two supervisors that were there represented the board.
Yeah.
And I, I think that's, that's great.
Brought up where everybody was, but, you know, I don't know, so.
Anyway, okay, that's all I got to say. All right?
If I could say, I don't get involved in the compensation issue, I, I will say just from, from a future standpoint, always remember you gotta be very, very careful about having more than two people, two supervisors at the same time, same platters. So I think from a legal perspective, last week, if you'd had three or more there, that could have been a problem. Having three supervisors or a majority supervisors at one place at a time is not necessarily a violation of a, of meetings law, but it certainly raises suspicion, gives appearances, so that's why you will hear most county attorneys, and I ain't talking anybody about this ahead of time, but just looking back, you will most of the time hear most county attorneys try to avoid having a majority. I mean, if you're all at a basketball game or something, you know, I mean, fine, right? You don't have to separate yourself from the community necessarily, it's just at certain government functions, uh, where there's kind of small gatherings, anyway, be careful about having a majority of supervisors there if it's not an official meeting of the board. So having three there last week, as, as the meeting was advertised, would have been a potential problem, so two is probably better from that perspective. Now, you, it, it is possible, I suppose, to have said, well, the meeting between the supervisors and the comp board could have been a joint meeting. We could have just made it a joint, published it as a supervisors' meeting also. I, I don't think that would, I don't know if there's anything blatantly wrong with it. It looks, because the comp board, it's supposed to be the comp board's meeting, so if you were to try and tie in a supervisors' meeting into that, that would start to raise questions, you know, because comp board would be saying, wait a minute, this is our meeting, not your meeting. So, except I'm not taking anybody's side or anything, I'm just saying that it's not unusual to have a minority of supervisors at a meeting like that, and having a majority could be problematic, so just.
There, there was an agenda and it was posted, so.
It wasn't a supervisors' meeting.
We're all in, but then all that, so.
It wasn't.
I mean, it's that all elected officials, so.
Well, I'm not, I don't, I understand. I'm, I'm not gonna get into a back part of it, I'm just telling you from a legal perspective, having a majority of supervisors at that meeting last week could have been problematic, so deal with it while you will.
Thank you. So, well, we could have opened it up with what we usually do, the supervisors' meeting, and then turn it over to their meeting. We've done that before, when there's majority, when most of the supervisors.
There's been more than two people in it before.
Well, like I said, I'm not, I'm not taking sides, I'm not trying to speak to what's been done before or hasn't been done before. My job is to try and keep county officials out of trouble, and so I do my best to do it.
And I looked up an old email from the previous county attorney regards to when he was still here with his meeting, and his email was to the board of supervisors and said, the five of you can go there, but you shouldn't be discussing anything. Basically, go there and sit there and not say anything. That was his advice, and, and Aaron's pretty much said the same thing right now. So the county attorney's job is to keep us out of trouble. Whether you wanna go by what he says, it's up to you. I try to follow his recommendations because, personally, he's my lawyer, so I don't get in trouble sitting here, so I'm gonna listen to that. Well, that does not mean that I did not contact the comp board. I, I talked to both of our representatives on the comp board, so it's not like I just blew this off and just said, whatever. I didn't go to the meeting, basically, because I was sicker than a dog, and I wasn't gonna go mangling around with people sick, so I had my own reasoning, but I did talk to the comp board. It's kind of unusual that you would call us out in a public meeting about this if you got a problem with something. I would think you'd talk to me personally. That's a different subject, but is there any other discussion in regards to this?
Well, we can lower the comp board's recommendations, correct?
We certainly can.
But you gotta lower it by percentage?
Yep. So you can lower by number or percentage, but it has to be the same for all of them.
So if we lower ours down to zero and take the one point five percent off the other ones, if that's possible?
We can do it that way, so. So if you were gonna, if you, if we were gonna lower the sheriffs from five down to three point five, if we lowered it one, one point five to match the other officials' rate, which would be the three five, that would lower the auditors down to two. There's another way you can do that, is if we did it by thirty percent. I did it in my head, but I, I wanna make sure I'm correct on it. So if you lowered the sheriffs by. If you lowered his down to three point five and you lowered the three point five numbers. That would lower them down to two point four five, wouldn't lower them all the way down to two. So there's a couple ways you can lower it if you wanna do that. Lower it up by thirty percent would not be as detrimental to the other elected officials. I don't know if that made sense or not, it'd be a time it's easier just to sit on paper, but that's how you wanna do it, if you wanna do it.
That's what I wanna do.
Okay. What would you propose?
Well, it's already motioned on the table again. We gotta move on that first.
Yeah, we can, we can rescind that too, so, come on. Yeah, you're correct.
You know, the discussion, we said there's motion or take a vote and have it pass or fail. So. And I don't feel like, I'm not gonna rescind my vote because I'm not gonna take zero for it. Anything is something. I'm not happy with it, absolutely not happy with it. Don't think anybody is. But, um, I can't take, I'm not gonna take that. I'm not gonna rescind it.
Okay, so we'll, we'll follow through with the vote. So is there any further discussion? Hearing none?
We'll call Jim.
Nay.
Sidney. Bye. Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Nay.
Tom.
Aye. Motion carries. Consideration of wage increase for already employees for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So we do this every year. Depends on how we want to pay the help, I guess I'll say. Other years, we've averaged the compensation board's recommendations and averaged all the salaries and came up with a number. We did that, comes up to ninety-two cents a dollar.
Ninety-two cents?
We averaged the compensation board numbers, it came to average of three point four two, and that's, and then average all the wages, plug that in, comes to ninety-two cents a dollar. Any thoughts from the board?
What, what did you say there? Three ones? Three point?
The average of the comp board comes to three point four two.
Last two years, it'd be per generous rate, what's cost living was.
Aye.
Yeah, yeah.
Last year was a dollar seventy-eight, before that was a dollar forty-six.
Correct. And if I remember, I did, we do it those two years the same way as this.
Yes. Yes, we did. Any thoughts from the board? What direction you'd like to go? Personally, I'm okay with the ninety-two cents an hour, but the C P I, the Consumer Price Index was three point one for all items. Looked that up the other night, so this is, this is just a touch over the Consumer Price Index, not by much, but a little bit.
Well, I guess it's stay consistent, what we've been doing in the previous years.
Any other thoughts? And Mike's doing some math, so I'm just trying to figure out, take, do what you need to do.
Did you take like one point five times five and three point five times four and then five one time to get your numbers?
To get my average?
Yeah, and then divide by ten, because it's ten people involved.
No, I just took the comp board's percent increases and averages.
Yeah. There's one, two, three, there's four, three point five, which is fourteen. Sheriff, the five, never five, the seven point five. That'd be two point six five percent, actually, the numbers I get, you know.
Yeah, that's true.
You know what I mean?
No, I don't, but, okay.
Well, you got one five percent, you got, you got four of them at three point five, so three point five, and four is fourteen, so you're at nineteen, and then the. So you're at 19 and then 1.5 times five is 7.5, so it's 26.5 divided by 10 equals
2.65%. I guess I won't do it that way.
There's 10 people involved, there's, you're taking an average of everybody, correct?
Not really, no. Percentages are just based on the recommendation of
Right, that's what I did, I took the percentages and added them all up and divided by 10 and that gave me an average percent of 2.65. You know what I mean?
That's not, no, I don't, that's not how I do it, but okay.
No. Okay. Well, that's.
Okay, no, I
I thought that's what you said, you took an average of all the percent.
I took an average of the percent of the compensation board, yeah. I didn't, I didn't do it like based on the actual individuals that I went to because
It actually be nine people in that then.
Well.
You're counting the, you're counting the chairperson, you don't count the second chair.
No, I didn't. No, there's five of us. Auditor, recorder, treasurer, county attorney.
Sheriff.
And sheriff, that makes another five, that's seven people.
I missed the sheriff.
Yeah, that's 10 people. You take all that percentages and have them, well, divide by 10.
And what you, what you did was?
What, that's how you do it.
I just did it pretty much simple as far as auditor, recorder, treasurer, sheriff, county attorney and supervisors. One, two, three, four, five, six entities and averaged the percent that each one of those entities was proposed to receive and averaged that.
I just did it by the number of people.
Okay. All right. So what's, what's your recommendation in terms of?
Well, if we're doing it to the wages, that way it'd be 2.65%. It would be. I just thought that's how we did it the other years, but yeah, I'm wrong.
No, we never did it that way.
No.
And your average is 3.48?
3.42. So what's your number, Mike, 2.6?
2.65.
That comes to 71 cents an hour.
So I know there's going to be, I don't know how the property tax is gonna, after the state gets done, you Rachel's are gonna be. You don't know.
Our valuations went up, but because of that bill, it was like a 9% increase, but then it gets decreased by 3%. I don't know, that's a whole new mess.
Yeah, I know, that's why I'm trying to be conservative based on what's coming. I'm sure there's increases in all the other budgets too, you know, which the roads, the whatever, the sheriffs and stuff, stuff you have to have, you know.
That's very true. I, I have a little issue with the, the elected officials getting theirs and then the help not getting the same type of an increase. There's a lot fewer of us elected officials sitting in chairs as compared to the help that runs the county. And the help that runs the county is actually the people that make the county happen. So to me, to me, they're more important than, than elected officials. That's my thought.
I'd say important, but yeah.
No, I don't.
It's like Martin said, they did a pretty good raise the last couple of years.
You're correct.
Yeah.
Is there a number that people would like to propose to use as a wage increase? We have, we have a, a couple of numbers have been thrown around. One is 92 cents, one is 71 cents. Is there something anywhere below or above in between that somebody would like? Do you want to table this, let's, what do we want to do?
Table it. Department heads, but I want to know what to put in for their budget.
Exactly. Exactly.
If we table it for a week, would that give them time?
No.
No.
No, we have to have our budgets to the auditor by the 29th. We have meetings the first week of January. I have to have my budget approved by the board of health this week.
I think there's something, but we should decide today.
Yeah, 2.65, 3.42, meet in the middle at 3.
At all. Use the number, use it, use the 3% you're saying?
Yeah.
That comes to 80 cents. When I say that last one, 70, that'd be
71.
71.
For Mike's, 92 for yours. And then you're saying 80 cents for the middle?
Yeah, 80 cents is, is that 3%? And the CPI is 3.1, so, well, let's just do, let's do that. What's the CPI number?
CPI number?
Great, let's plug that in, see what that is. 3.1 is a CPI. That's probably not going to be much different at all, but it's, you know, 83. 83 is the consumer price index number, but is what it would be.
Jim, may I say something?
Yes.
So it seems like it's kind of difficult to give hourly people raises and it shouldn't be that hard. White people are important. I mean, if I lose one, then the raises that you give will be eaten up just in training class. So I need to retain the people that I have. And so I want you to give them 92% or 92 cents. Because they're, they're worth that in the morning. And that's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
What's the board think?
Oh, we won't lose anybody, but there's gotta be a limit somewhere. Can't just keep going up and up and up every year.
Well, prices keep going up, Mark.
Correct.
You know, I
So the only way we get our money is from taxpayers.
I know, I, I appreciate your position, I really do, because I gotta take care of taxpayers' money too. And I answer to the taxpayers just like you guys do. So I know there's a balance there.
Sure. So we can't just keep raising taxes every year and going up and up and up? Keep going to the taxpayers and saying, give, give, give.
Sure, but we can't also balance our budget on the back of our employees. Maybe there's other areas we've got to look at.
We tried that last year and that didn't work. Tried that just now and so it's, it's a tough call.
It is. Yep, it is, but the employees are what make my office go. And I gotta pitch for them because they, they can't, they don't have the same opportunity to be here as I do. And I want to keep them. So that's my two cents, you guys do your work. I'll do mine, you know, we'll both answer to the taxpayers. But we've got to put out a good product for them and we try to do that, sure, so.
Rich, what are your, you guys have a union contract.
Yeah, I don't know what that increases this year.
You don't know what it is this year?
Yeah. Well, we're going to be negotiating.
Oh, that's right, it's a year, so.
We could call as a one year, that's right.
Well, one year, don't stick your money.
Okay.
Yeah, so you don't have a number, yeah. In the past you did. I can tell you what I do in Worth County if it matters, it's not a contract, but I figured if every one of the officials were a certain percentage, so are my employees, so we're there. So I believe Worth County is, you've got anywhere between 4% and that's what I'm going to give my guys there. Because like Greg said, they're, they're the ones that are doing a lot of the work out there and we've got to answer the public, but I'm having a hard enough time finding employees in Worth County to fill positions that have been lost because people are paying better wages in the county. I'm still one guy short, I can't find one. The struggle is real finding employees and losing them is harder to replace than keeping them. My two cents worth.
I did a vote, Greg, Peter and Rich, because I'm struggling trying to fill a position because as healthcare workers, the nursing homes and hospitals, they have sign-on bonuses, they have raises, they are making a lot more than the county healthcare workers. And so you just said publicly, somebody said 10% at Worth County and now we're, we're trying to cut us under the elected officials here. People are seeing that and it's, it's hard to get people employed and to be able to keep our long-term employees, we have to take care of them.
We also have to remember that we, we took the constituency elected us and we took almost a 15% pay cut when we sat down three years ago. And they wanted to see how we would do and now all of a sudden we, us five, have to make these tough decisions. And they took 3.5% away from us from the last two raises. So I, I hope you understand this isn't an easy decision by any means. And I got a lot of going in my head there to try and figure out how we can make this work and, but yet I feel like us five are a little more important than the 1.5, but
But that's a difference, I agree.
Yep, so. We will.
So we've got 92 cents is based on the average of, at least the way I average it for elected officials. That's a tad bit over the CPI. It's the same as what elected officials are meeting. There's 83 cents, there's 71 cents. I generally don't make motions, in fact, I have it all year, but I can make motions. There's nothing against me doing that. So I will make the motion. I'll make a motion that we increase hourly employees, hourly increase at a rate of 92 cents an hour. We already made the motion, hard to go second. Any further discussion?
Well, I think based on the chair's recommendation, well, if it's probably, okay, well, if it makes adjustments other places, then we need to, I guess.
Any other discussion? Hearing none?
We're called Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
No.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
Home Health, Public Health update.
Hello. So we had a board meeting last week. We kind of missed coming a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of months ago after our board meeting, couldn't make it. So just to kind of go over our expenses, we are actually, under other expenses, we brought in about $95,000 for expenses and, or spent about $95,000 in expenses in November and then our revenues were actually above on our revenues. We brought in about $120,000 for revenue, so we're sitting really good on our budget. We did, the board of health approved our budget for FY '25 last Friday. I was not, I didn't know what the wages were going to be, so I just kind of based it off of last year. Mike was not aware of the recommendations last Friday, so we kind of went off of last week, they approved it. So I may have to adjust that. We received our Medicare cost report. It was due, so this is required and it's submitted, it's due in November, so I submitted that last month. So in that cost report includes what our costs, or what our cost per visit is. And so we have not had to increase our nurse or aide, or our nurses since 2020, our rate. Our aide and our therapy rates, we haven't had to increase it since 2017. With our, we kind of always look at our costs to see if we have to increase and we actually are still under what our rates are, so we still will not have to, to increase those rates. We don't like to do that as our private pay people, we try and keep it a, a low cost for them. So luckily we didn't have to increase anything. Staffing updates. We do have, I sent an email to you guys this morning. We do have somebody retiring a long time employee, Dana Thompson, who's been a home health aide for about 17 years now. Retiring at the end of this month, so we're going to be having a retirement party in January. You guys are all invited to come to congratulate her on her retirement. So we will be hiring for an aide. I talked to the board last week about seeing if we could hire a full-time aide as we're struggling to hire a part-time. So we had one of our full-time employees increasing to, or our part-time employees increasing to full-time, but we still are in need of another person to come. So we are currently hiring for a full-time or part-time aide as, as soon as possible. So we did, at our last board meeting, not this one, but the last one, we did increase our aide's starting wage as we were quite a bit under compared to everybody else in the county. So that was increased to 1550 an hour. I would say we're probably still below other people as well, but it was a $2 jump compared to what we were before, so. To update on our grant financials, we did receive a shop on state grant to kind of do some upgrades to our lobby to make it look more welcoming and presentable and be able to have more resources out there. So we are seeing a lot more people coming in as we're doing a lot more vaccines, which Jessa will be going over. And then we also got some supplies for the nurses to, to stay organized in their cars when they're going home and home. We did receive a new grant from the state, just a one-time grant to help increase immunization rates for COVID and influenza, which we were already doing anyway. So this was a, a little boost, a little over $12,000 to help us pay for our salary time to do all that and help advertise that, so you guys might have seen more ads in the paper and, and things like that. So we got funds to help us pay for that now, just at one time. And then our I-4 grant, that's $8,000, that actually has all been spent this year. A lot of what Jessa talks about, that's what that money is, is going towards. Our IT grant, I know we've talked about that several times, we're getting to the end where it has to be spent by the end of this month. We did purchase, we upgraded all the nurses' Surface Pros. It had been since 2020 since we updated those and with computers that, that's actually quite a bit of time, three years, it's, they're already outdated unfortunately. So we did purchase those, so as soon as we have a new IT person, it's the first job I'm going to have them do. We purchased several other things, like monitors and and iPad and rolling station for the language lines, so when we have people come in for immunizations or we have that tool there to help us that barrier, that, that language barrier, so we did that and that's kind of about it. So we have still probably about $6,000 left. So and we have to have that spent. Oh, I think we're good, I ta, I did talk to Solutions yesterday, we're going to try to get some Microsoft packages for the nurses and get those paid for. So it doesn't have to come out of the IT grant or out of the IT budget.
Microsoft packages.
Like the, like Office or Word, Excel, Outlook, things like that, so. And we'll pay for like a year in advance. I think it sounds like it might get paid for monthly, like a monthly subscription. And so we're going to pay for like a year in advance, so that will save the IT department on that. But after this month, it's not there, so after that, unfortunately, we won't be able to pay for that. So we did, we had a request last week that someone was asking if we did gift certificates. So we were going to start doing gift certificates for, we ramped up our foot care clinics that we do, they can come into our office for $25. Any individuals that can't reach or see they're having trouble getting, clipping their toes and doing their foot care, so we've been doing quite a few, the nurses do them right in our office. So we've had some people asking if they can prepay and get gift certificates for their family members for Christmas. And so we now are accepting or offering gift certificates for, for families out there. So we've switched over to a different in-service program. And so it's going to save us about almost $700 a year for the program that we use to do the in-services for all of our staff that's required. So not only that, it's going to save us quite a bit of money, but it will tout towards the nurses' CEUs for the Iowa Board for their nursing licenses, so that will be at no cost to them to be able to do that. Otherwise they have to pay for that on their own. Otherwise, they have to pay for that on their own. Um, since I've been here last, we actually had our Department of Inspections and Appeals Recertification Survey that they do every three years. Um, so we've been kind of waiting for that, being prepared. And, um, overall, it was a very good survey. We did have four kind of standard deficiencies. We did submit our plan of correction, um, and it has been accepted. Uh, so when they come, they do a chart audit for, um, a certain number of charts and they go and follow three of our staff members into the homes and talk to the patients. And, um, overall, everything went very well. Uh, it's probably the best survey we've had in probably fifteen to twenty years. So, um, we were very happy with it. So, um, so we should be sitting good for the next three years until they come again. Uh, I think I've talked about this before, EBB transition, the electronic visit verification that Medicaid in Iowa is now requiring. So when our staff goes into the home, they have to actually, um, on their iPads, a timestamp and a location, so that way, um, that's, it's all noted in there, when they were, that they were actually there, there's no fraud. And, um, I think this is kind of being done because of some fraud that's probably been done in the past, not with us, but overall Medicaid-wise. So, um, that's something kind of new that they're going to have to do. We thought we were going to have to do some double charting. And so that's all, um, kind of within our EMR system, we won't have to do that. So it's more or less kind of our, on the backside, it's going to be a lot more work for our billing side of things. I kind of already mentioned the clinics. Uh, we've been doing a lot more outreach, going out and talking to different groups. Um, like we went to the Rotary last week, we went to a church group. Um, so we're kind of offering that if anybody wants us to come talk to their, their group or their club about the services that we provide, we're more than welcome, they just have to give us a call and we come, talk about all the services that we provide. There's a lot of people who don't realize what we all do. And then Jolie Norby is actually up for appointment this year. So I believe we told Mike, so I believe you guys are going to do that in January, is that right?
Yep.
Okay. So she is interested in going another term, just wanted to let you guys know that. Any questions for me?
Just want to thank all the services that these people provide, you know, you, of course, partner, kind of help people and it's great when you look for outside money, grants, state other money, period, it saves taxpayers money.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's good to know.
Thank you.
Five years, Jim.
Great. I do want to also add, for Laura's, Dr. Ross has been serving on our board for thirty-five years. Um, so we had a couple of state representatives came down and presented Dr. Ross with a certificate, so he has been serving on our board for thirty-five years, which is amazing. So, and he continues, or he wants to continue, so, um, we're hoping to get another fifteen out of him.
Yeah.
So in the world of public health, um, the numbers I have today, it was just from, um, October. Um, I have had one labor and delivery referral, still doing blood pressure clinics, assessed fifty-six blood pressure pressures throughout the county, um, a change in Riceville, so I was going to Old School One-on-One, hitting their coffee hour. Um, unfortunately, Old School One-on-One, oh, One-on-One, excuse me, is, um, shutting down or closing. Um, and so I will be going to Tenth Hall, um, actually at the same time, it may get changed a little bit, um, because that's where they're really locating coffee time. So a lot of the same, I discussed it with the people that are always there, um, and that's where they're heading for coffee. So I will be going there at the same time, they're looking forward to continue that service for them, so that will continue. Um, immunizations, we've seen, that's taken a lot of time over the last three months, um, as normal September through, through this time, it's a busy time for immunizations. So, um, we did see a total of about sixteen hundred patients, um, and I guess basically October, November, um, and the end of just September, excuse me, and having, have given a total of twenty-three hundred, or two thousand three hundred eighty-one vaccines, um, to individuals. Um, so seeing lots and lots of individuals still, we're continuing to offer clinics, um, we have one today, twelve to five, and then we're doing a couple in, um, January as well, just as walk-ins, just to hit those individuals that weren't ready to get it yet, um, but will be ready at that time. As always, people can call, make appointments, never turn anyone away with that either. Um, this year we did do a total of different drive-throughs, walk-ins, um, sixteen of those. I went through twenty-three different businesses throughout Mitchell County, um, to provide food shots to, and then went to five nursing homes, assisted living, to provide food shots to as well. So, um, we're continuing to see our businesses increase, they like it that we come to them. It's hard for employees to get away, um, and then to allow that, to get away to go to the doctor with a vaccine. So, um, really have good collaboration with businesses out there. Um, just in the last couple of months, made about fifty thousand dollars in vaccines with those individuals coming in, um, still sitting really good there. Um, school daycare immunization audits, so every year, the school has to get audited, daycares get audited for vaccines. We have an Iowa immunization law, um, that's, they have to follow. So, um, schools had to be completed the end of October, um, so I have completed that. Um, so we do, or I do OSAGE St. Ansgar, um, and then all the Men Night and Amish schools throughout Mitchell County. Um, so there was a total of enrollment of one thousand six hundred fifty students, um, and if they have no certificates, or if certificate on file or the certificate is invalid, um, that affects our percentages, percentage. So it was a seven point three nine percent of those kids that did not have invalid or no certificates. Um, a majority of that, I would say, come from the Amish community, um, after, you know, less education, they don't have certificates, they don't have an exemption, um, or anything like that. So it's just reminding them, you need to have an exemption form and all that, that as well, too. So I do work closely with the schools, um, in that respect, um, aspect of things. And it looks a lot better than last year. I think we were in double digits last year of the percentage, so they're starting to improve as well, too. Um, the childcare immunization audits, I just finished those up. Um, there's four hundred and thirty-six individuals enrolled, and I should make comment, this is just the, the community daycare. So, um, OSAGE St. Ansgar, Stacyville, and then like the Groyntree preschool, the preschool in St. Ansgar, all get combined into this as well, too. So there's a four hundred and thirty-six total enrollment for that, and there's a three point nine percent of those kids that do not have an invalid or no certificate, um, for that, that, um, those group of kids, too. So overall, much improvement from last year, continue to work on that with them as well, too.
Home schooling, given you're popular, how would you do that?
So usually with homeschool students, so they are in my, um, percentage, they have to have a school that they're associated with. So, and Ty maybe you'll speak on this a little bit more. Um, so like all the kids that are homeschooled, they are like, let's say they live in the OSAGE, whatever, they are still included, a lot of them will come in and do sports or band or, and those types of things. So they're included in their enrollment, as dual enrollment. So those kids are still included on, on that as well. Yep. So, and that's, I can say that's where some of the schools, they don't have their immunization record for, too. So, um, kids can have exemption forms, so there's two different exemption forms, religious or medical. So if they, um, have religious exemption, medical exemption, they can provide certificates, um, that say that they have that, um, and they don't have to be immunized. Um, or there's also provisionals that, let's say a child started late, um, didn't get vaccines for a medical reason, uh, is going through chemotherapy, that's, that can be commented, too. So they have provisional saying they're on hold, um, they're trying to play catch-up due to that illness or whatever, too. So, um, there's ways around that, and that doesn't count towards the percentage. So, good question. Um, F P update, so, um, for Mitchell County, uh, we've had four CAMPE investigations into GRE cases, um, in the last couple of months. We are seeing an increase flu, COVID, and RSV activity. Um, it's since November, but we're starting to see more hospitalizations affecting our hospital systems, um, and people testing positive for those. I have had three nursing home outbreaks in, um, in the last couple of weeks. We actually had one, really two different places, so two nursing homes, but one nursing home had two outbreaks, so dealing with that. Did give PPE, so we have the storage shed where we're over there, um, and lots of PPE in there. So there was some nursing homes that couldn't get, um, protective equipment on time, um, and we're going through it rapidly, so had to deliver, um, that to them as well. Schools are looking pretty good, there is no, there's no school at ten percent. So if schools are at ten percent of illness, they have to report it to the state, um, the state then contacts being, I have to go, you know, and, and have those conversations. I do stay in touch with them, um, quite frequently with the nurses there, and, and none of them are at ten percent yet. Um, we've seen lots of illnesses, go from pink eye, strep, GI, colds, coughs, temperatures, um, those types of things, because they're still getting sick, we're just not at that rate, so which is good, too. Um, I am working with, um, the schools as well for our curriculum available for vaping, tobacco prevention, um, and so we're kind of, we want to kind of focus through the sixth through eighth graders, um, for that. So just working with them to get that curriculum started in the school, too, if they're on board with that. Any questions in regards to any of that? So last thing, I did have, um, some of you guys did work with me with our chat chip. Um, there was a couple of stakeholders here that came. So this is our, my finalized chat chip, um, which is Community Health Assessment and our Health Improvement Plan. Come on, come on, or, okay. Oh, I can take it. Um, and so this has been turned into the state, it's been approved. Um, our board has approved it and seen it, um, now with you guys, and then I will be turning it over to the stakeholders that participated in this with us and who are part of this plan, too. So in here, um, listed who had, who helped us with this, um, and who the stakeholders were involved, has what our community is made of, and then executive summary, um, and then it goes in and talk about our priorities and, um, what we're going to do to adjust these policy and who's involved, help us adjust these, um, these priorities, um, in our plan. So you will see that, that's over the next five years, um, that we'll do this. That doesn't mean that this can't change, or we can add different goals to this, or anything like that, too, but, um, this is what we'll be working on and, um, to make, just for me, um, figure out those priorities and make that better as well, too. So if you guys have questions on that, go ahead, look it over. If you have questions, um, once it on, talk to me about that, um, let me know as well, too. So that's what I've also been working on. Um, we met several times, the meetings, um, and then we'll continue to do this process five and four years, we'll start over again and see any other needs that may be addressed. That doesn't mean that these are the only needs that need to be addressed in Mitchell County either, there's others, but it's, what can we do? Is there already a group that's working on a certain need that we thought was a high priority, too? Just in our, our group of stakeholders that met, we felt these were, and that we can, that's all.
Very good. Any questions for the ladies?
Awesome.
Thanks for everything you do.
Thank you. Thanks for the support.
Discussion on Crisis Intervention Services Funding Request. Uh, this is not discussion and action because we decided we're going to work on some of these for a bunch of time. Pursuit the letter, letters dated December sixth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, Crisis Intervention Service, they're a non, private nonprofit organization. Their mission, I'm not going to read this whole name, so. The mission of Crisis Intervention Services is to provide persons affected by domestic violence, sexual assault, and homicide with professional confidential twenty-four-hour services, including safety and support, and to prevent violence in our communities through education. Uh, they provide short-term crisis and follow-up counseling, uh, provide victim advocacy, child advocacy support groups, financial assistance, and twenty-four-hour helpline. They provide support to two thousand two hundred seventy-seven individuals in North Central Iowa, and they answer to seven thousand one hundred fifty-eight crisis calls. Their annual budget is two million thirty-five thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. They employ twenty-four individuals. Most of the revenue comes from federal state grants, which step amongst eighty-nine percent. Private foundations, let's see here, not sure how she's got this word. Private foundations, three percent, ninety-three percent, local governments, one percent. There's a four percent in there, but I'm not sure how that's defined, anyway. So they do, they do seek money from other organizations also. They are requesting, they're requesting a thousand dollars from each county to support safe housing, crisis services, and counseling and community education programs for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. So this is a discussion item. Are there any comments or questions from the board? I think that four percent is, uh.
Donations.
Okay, there you go, yep. All right. So they're asking a thousand dollars from us. Any questions, comments? Okay, there you go. Uh, the next item is discussion on WOBSY Days Funding Request. Again, no action on this, but the Riceville Community Club, elect to request five hundred dollars from, uh, the board to help with expenses for Riceville WOBSY Days, which will be held on August second and third, twenty twenty-four. Requesting five hundred dollars. Any discussion on that? That's the same amount. Did you have one, three? I believe so.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Still a discussion? For the board, okay. Uh, discussion of possible action on, uh, new hire for IT Director. Does the committee want to talk about it? Rachel want to talk about it? You guys were kind of involved with the board and what, you heard?
Offered the guy a job and he took it.
Okay.
Wanted, uh, fill in our vacation, so. I guess we, uh, offered that, I guess, and he agreed to it. Starts, if we approve it, it starts January second. I guess I'll make a motion to hire Ryan Stefan, IT Director.
I'll second it.
You're seconded. Anderson made the motion, air, uh, seconded. Any further discussion? What was his, uh, what's compensation package going to be? What are we going to pay him?
Seventy-eight thousand and, uh, full state from thirty, mileage while at work, if he has to travel, and educational opportunities. Then, you know, you only get forty hours vacation the first year, he wanted eighty hours, because he's used to a hundred and twenty, you know, and after the second year, he'll be at that eight. So it's just a one-time first year deal for that, so we agreed to that.
Okay. It seemed like.
We did all the background checks and everything?
Yep.
Sure.
Oh.
References?
Started in January. Yeah, Joel was here, Joel.
You recommended. Yeah? That we hired, so. Any scenes? There you go. Want to thank Rachel? Very good. So, any other discussion? That's the question I had, sort of, the discussion.
I want to thank Rachel for all her work. She did most of it.
You did, too. Hearing no further discussion.
Recall Sidney.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Motion carries. Items are noted, we need to tend to. HVAC progress meet yesterday. Most of the items that are kind of in storage in the basement have been installed. Uh, woodman controls is working this week, the electrician will be working next week. There is a number of electrical items that's going to need to be done. The ITCs, that's where the instruction to contractor for those change orders. There's been revisions on each one of those, we're trying to find two of those to make them better, not more expensive, but better. That expense is part of that as far as to make it reasonable. So there will be three change orders coming from those three ITCs. Again, electrical controls will be in over the next two or three weeks. Still planning on second week in, uh, January to be fully operational. The boilers heating the jail side of it, and the geothermal field is heating the non-jail side of things right now, so some of this has to happen. The boilers heating the jail side of it and the geothermal field is heating the non-jail side of things right now. So some of this has to happen to let all of that be a tied system. That's pretty much it for what I have.
Thank you.
Ohio Select Pass off park lanes and fairgrounds. Tuesday, I guess it was, and had a conservation board meeting. Do you want to talk on it?
Yeah, I missed the department head because a guy showed up right as I was walking out of the door and want to talk, so sorry about that. But yeah, we had a meeting last Tuesday for month of December, talked about the hydro plant, where we're coming along with that. We got the bearings installed on the upper bracket, and today, actually this morning, the guys are installing the lower bracket. So by the end of the day today, we should have that chamber flooded, and then we'll begin getting that second generator up and running here over the course of the week. It'll take us about a week because we've got to do some other stuff, not only get the water back in the chamber. Then we also discussed balance access. We're trying, we got an easement that we, our new lease agreement that we submitted with the O Sage Conservation Club that they're reviewing. We hope to have action on that in January, and then that can begin our water trail project that we got going from there. That was pretty much the highlights of the type thing, unless I'm forgetting something. Elaine gave updates, packet update on the bike trail information to the board. I forget something.
Oh, you're going to be cutting down ash trees in the park.
Oh, yes. Yep, a lot of people probably notice in all the campgrounds and stuff will have a lot of markings on trees, they are ash trees, they are dying, they're going to become a hazard. We're sort of focusing on the wild or the campgrounds and the public park areas first. So if you do see orange marks on ash trees, understand those trees are going to be taken down over the course of this winter. We're working with some local individuals to see if they want to, in exchange for them doing the labor to take the trees down and be able to have the wood type thing, like purchase the wood from us, the lumber from us type thing versus our guys spending hours upon hours cutting the trees, you know. They would, they would be buying the wood, so it'd be on contract instead of costing us money for them to take it down, it would take a little bit off. We're looking at that aspect of it. But it's going to be a lot of ash trees. There are going to be a few campgrounds that are going to look different, but we need to do it now because in the next two years, they're going to start falling or dropping branches, and that's going to be more liability income. So we're trying to stay ahead of it. Thanks for reminding me.
Yeah.
That's all there was on that. When I mentioned Hinkle Construction, and then I went to the comp board meeting on Thursday.
I had nothing but, I sent you a message Saturday on the lights.
Yep.
And I went by today and it's still not happening, still not.
This morning? So this morning, some of the individuals have it where they turn on, it's night is when they're fully on, some people just like to not to have them turn on in the morning type thing. They shut off overnight, in the middle of the night, and then they flip back on in the morning if they wanted to choose to. What the technical difficulty was is those are all G F I outlets that they're all up to, and because of the rain on Saturday, it created puddling, and then it was kicking the breakers all the time. So we've got it set up now that though, if it does rain again, it won't work. Usually this time of year, everything froze up. Usually be on rain in December, so.
Okay, I guess. I have nothing. I didn't have anything either, no meetings, but a while back, are you planning on putting maybe some trees back in at some point in the parks?
We are. One of our budget items that we'll be talking about next month is a lot of purchase of trees. We put, I think it was fifteen trees in this last spring and this next year, we're going to be putting in like a lot more, but we're going to put that as part of our discussion during budget type thing.
Okay. There were, I had, I got an email, this was early this year, of the government helping with these ash trees that if parks and areas take out so many, they would help put trees back. And if I can find that again, maybe I.
There's a few out there that we've been looking at to learn, like grant sources type thing. But the problem with it is everybody dealing with this statewide, I mean, we're Mitchell County, we're probably three to five years behind what the eastern part of the state has already been with. So they've already had a large takeout and replace type thing, but what it's done is it strove like your trees up. So your six to eight foot trees cost a lot more than they used to because the demand is there. Everybody's looking for six to eight foot trees, put in the, you know, your boulevards, your rightaways, all that sort of stuff, the number of trees that have been coming out. But it's just slowly working its way across the state, and we're finally here where it's going to be us, so everybody's dealing with it. Yeah, but there's sources out there and we look at those. It kicks in a little bit, but a little help.
Thank you. So the west side of the state really is.
They have it. Yep, they have it too. I was just saying, it's, you know, you go like, well, seven years ago, we were in quarantine, and we were quarantined by county, so you didn't want to see any logs or trees moving outside the county. Well, now we, I think it was like, five, five years ago or so, we went to a statewide quarantine, and now it's everywhere across the state, it's been identified in a good chunk of counties. It's just the, what you're seeing is the damage now. So if you look at an ash tree, you're driving around, you're looking, you'll see that they're yellow, and that's kind of like the bark is chipping off, that's the last stage. When it gets to that point, it's very yellow, that's when you're going to start seeing branches start falling type thing. And then the big thing is you want to get ahead of that because when you start cutting the tree, that vibration on the tree, the branches will actually start falling as you're cutting, so then it becomes a big hazard, and you got to turn around and start taking everything from the top down, which then you got to buy a boom, rent a boom, and then that costs more. So we're trying to get ahead of it by taking the tree now. While they don't have as much yellow on them because they do have it, so, you know, in Butler County where I came from before, we're about two years ahead of you guys, we already had trees taken out two years ago because they were already starting, we had to start doing the top down because we're that far behind here, we're trying to get ahead of it because of that aspect that went across to the western side of the state, they do have it, they have been identified, they're just not seeing the dappled trees where you're seeing the canopy, parts of the canopy being dying off, where you still have the leaf growth, but the parts are dying. They're just kind of getting into that stage now. And each county is different because there could be a hotspot in certain parts of the western side of the state. I don't have that information, but yeah, it's kind of slowly going to work its way across the state, and eventually ashes is just going to be a thing of the past.
So that's very unfortunate.
It is. So we're only working on the campgrounds right now, then we will turn to the wildlife areas, and certain ones in the wildlife area. We're not going to take every ash in the wildlife area because dead trees aren't great habitat, but if they're a hazard, then we'll take a look at them. But right now, it's campgrounds first.
Do you think this is worse than the Dutch elm disease or similar?
It's pretty similar just due to the fact that what if we replace everything with the elm breath, we replace it with ash. So future diversity. If you're going to replant trees and you got a lot, put a mixture, put oaks, put almonds, put maples, you know, all that, don't just put one type of tree.
But like in the wild, there still is ash trees in the woods, so.
Yep.
Or I mean elms, there's still elms.
Yep, so elms have to get to a certain height before that, before they get attacked, so they have to be a certain height before, that's another elevation type thing. Where these ash trees, the board just moves right to the tree, doesn't care what age it is or what height it is, it moves right in. So you could have a thirty-foot tree or a ten-foot tree, either way, it's going to get, it's dead. As an elm, you got to a certain point before it gets attacked.
So I see they're, you know, they're still around. They don't usually live that long either.
These ashes are going to be, they're going to be gone. And best if you got them in a bad spot, put them down now, get them out as soon as.
What's the bug gum after that?
That's what everybody wants to know, man, I don't know on that one.
I had a question too, when Rich was here, I wondered why some of the rivers and streams like in the county are labeled and some ain't, like Merrell Creek will be labeled, the Cedar River instance is labeled, and that's.
So that would be like a D and R question on that, and I don't, I don't know how they decide what does or what doesn't. I know there was, they wanted to originally have all black cops labeled and then not gravel roads, but then there was grants out there years ago that you could do, watersheds could apply for and do watershed and creek identification type thing.
I don't know, I just, see, it's kind of sporadic.
Yeah, it's a D and R, why they do it, what do, what does get it, what doesn't. Sometimes it's when a bridge gets flipped out, maybe it gets put in, maybe it doesn't, I don't know on that, to be honest with you. No, I just.
Any other meetings attended? Were we done? Were we done, okay? Public comments? Any public comments?
Is that one comment? I'll send out the agenda on Thursday, it goes Monday, Tuesday, so the meeting will be next Wednesday.
Okay. Kind of bounced around, we got all items done, didn't we? Okay. Nine forty-eight, meeting is adjourned.